Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, December 23rd, 2014. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Since this is the last school committee meeting of the year, I would just like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the memory of those members of the Southbridge School community, including students, alumni, teachers, and staff members who are no longer with us. Will you just take a moment of silence, please? Thank you. The next agenda item is public input. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the school committee this Good evening. If you would just state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Satilli. I'm a resident of Southbridge, and I'm the Commandant of the local Marine Corps League detachment. And the reason I'm here tonight is, first of all, is to thank the school committee and the school superintendent for their help in making the 2014 Toys for Tots campaign a big success. From the Brookfields to Webster, from Spencer to Southbridge, every kid that needed got four toys. They were -- 10th that week collected over $10,000. These are preliminary numbers. And from $12,000 to $15,000 in cash that will be donated to the United States Marine Corps Reserve. We are responsible for this territory from, as I said before, as I described before. However, if it wasn't for the school committee and the school superintendent in granting us use of your facilities, this program would not have been a success. So in light of that, I'd like to make a presentation of certificate of appreciation for Patricia Gardner, the superintendent, Dr. Page, Mr. Olivo, Mrs. Condon, Mr. Abramson, Mrs. Quinney, Mrs. McLaughlin, and Ms. Kara Donovan. If I could present these.
Please.
We appreciate your attendance.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. We plan to continue this program again. We've been doing it for about a decade, a little over a decade, and there's a lot of happy kids out there. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The certificates were unnecessary, but thank you very much, Mr. Satilli. Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the school committee this evening? Good evening, Mr. Moriarty.
Good evening. I just wanted to stop by. I mean, I've been to most of the meetings since late special anyways, but I just wanted to point out and just kind of thank and give credit to everybody from students, parents, faculty, administration, and so forth, that the girls' basketball game yesterday and everything that's gone on in the last several days for the efforts and just the class act that everything, the way everything was done, I thought was really remarkable and kind of shows how well, despite anything else that goes on in this community, when things come together like that, things that matter, they always come together quite well. Just wanted to give some credit and thanks to all those who did so.
Thank you. Mr. Moriarty, just for the record, your address?
I'm sorry?
Your address for the record.
Sure. Sean Moriarty, 44 Maggie Lane, 1313 Lockingburg.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to address the school committee this evening? I'm not sure. Are we done? Okay. Thank you. Then I'll call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM, please. May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Condon?
Present.
Dr. Page?
He's excused. He's traveling.
Okay. Mr. Olivo?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Ms. Abramson?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Sixth president?
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. There are five items with some subsections on the agenda tonight. It is necessary to move Consent Agenda Item Number D, the Composition of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Additional information is required on this agenda item, so that will be put off to another day. Does any member wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I request that Item C2, Policy BEDH, Public Participation at School Committee Meetings, be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you. We'll remove that from the consent agenda and place it under Unfinished Business. Is there any other items to be removed? If none, then Items on the Consent Agenda, A, those are regular school committee meeting minutes of November 25th, and the regular school committee meeting minutes of December 9th; Third, Policy Readings of BG, Policy Development, Adoption, Implementation, and Review; Policy ADDA, Background Checks, as revised; Policy DJE, Bidding Requirements; and the First Reading of Policy GCCD, Domestic Violence Leave Act. In addition, would be the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Annual Report for the 2013-2014 school year. If there's no objection, these items will be adopted or accepted. Seeing none, there being no objection, these items are adopted by the school committee by unanimous consent. Chairperson's announcements. I have a few announcements this evening, brief. The musical performance that was scheduled to take place before this meeting tonight from 6:30 to 7:00 was postponed at the band director's request. This performance will be rescheduled at a later date. It's always nice to hear from the band students, and they will be asked to return in short order. Just like everybody to know that school vacation begins tomorrow. Enjoy the time off, and school will resume on January 5th, 2015. And finally, I'd just like to report that Ms. Gardner is unable to join us up at the podium this evening, so in her stead is Ms. Stanton, the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. We welcome her this evening. Next agenda item are reports under -- so we'll take a report of the representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Mr. Boisbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The National Honor Society sponsored its first annual holiday toy drive this December. Students and staff participated by donating used and new, slightly-used unwrapped toys to benefit needy children within the district. The toy drive concluded with a gift-wrapping party on Friday, December 19th, 2014. Thanks to the efforts and generosity of those who participated, the National Honor Society will donate a total of approximately 60 gifts to needy children within the district. In addition, National Honor Society donated another five gifts to the four-year-old sister of a 2014 Southbridge Middle High School graduate and National Honor Society member who has recently diagnosed with cancer. The student council is waiting to hear back about the funds for our field trip to Cape Cod. That is all.
Thank you very much. Now for school committee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have a report. We had a tentative meeting scheduled for December 17th, but I needed to cancel that due to a scheduling conflict. And then with the holiday, we ran out of time for the month of December. So I'll announce that our next meeting will take place on Wednesday, January 21st, at 6:30 PM. And of course, an agenda will follow, and I'll probably announce a location at the next time, the next time we meet. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. The Negotiations Subcommittee, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All of the school committee met with the teachers' union to participate in interest-based bargaining training on December 13th. At this time, the school committee is solidifying their IDB team, and we have some tentative dates held with the trainer and the facilitator, excuse me, and the union to start that process. We are continuing negotiations with SEI Local 888. Our last meeting was December 18th, and our next is scheduled for January 22nd. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a report as a SPED PAC liaison?
The SPED PAC met this Thursday night, the 18th, and at this time, there is no meeting scheduled for the month of January. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just report that the Policy Subcommittee meeting, the next meeting, will take place on January 7th, 2015, in Room M100 at Cole Avenue. The next report is of the Finance Director, Mr. Osborne.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to begin by recognizing some members of the central office staff, Katie Joris, Deanna Martinez, Ariel Kephar, and Michelle Latour. I think a lot of staff don't realize we had a payroll emergency come up this week. Our regular payroll person was unable to come in the past two days. Those four individuals stepped up. They worked back and forth with our payroll person by a text and by a phone to make sure the payroll was completed on time, in fact, ahead of time, and ready for people to be able to pick up checks today. So I would just like to extend a thank you to those folks for all of their hard work in doing that. That's great. You all have before you an updated financial report, budget to actual expenses. I've tried to break it out a little further into school level and call out items of interest, so some areas where we might be over budget, as well as some areas where monies will come from. Some key areas that are always an issue are out-of-district special education. And as you'll see on the front page, I've also lined out some items where there are some backstops for some of those items and where some of those monies can come from. So I've listed out circuit breaker, some salaries that will be on grants, and some other items. I'm not suggesting we try to digest all of this and go through it today before the holidays. Maybe the committee can take a look at it, and we can come back next time and have a discussion of this. Or when we have a Finance Subcommittee, that might be an appropriate venue.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Osborne? We do have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled on the books for January 7th, so if the Finance Committee isn't together by then, then that one might be a good time to discuss this information.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Next, we have a report of the superintendent, Ms. Stanton.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the superintendent, I would like to share two upcoming events with you. On January 27th, Pat Williams, our Plan Monitor, will be attending school committee to share her report with us. She has been meeting with us regularly in her highlights meetings, which have been very positive. For the week of January 5th, the district will be conducting learning walks at West Street School. And with our Focus on Results consultant, we will also be doing professional development with our ILT, our Instructional Leadership Teams. And finally, on behalf of the superintendent and all of central office, we'd like to wish all staff, students, and their families a very safe and happy holiday break, and we look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is, we have a couple of presentations this evening, so I would ask Ms. Stanton maybe to join me up at the podium. So the first presentation this evening is in recognition for the work that's been done and the donations that have been made to finish the outdoor classroom at the Southbridge Middle High School on Torrey Road. This project had kind of been at a standstill since the school's construction, and with a very generous donation on behalf of the 1917, 1961 Mary E. Wells Coal Trade High School Alumni Fund, and also the assistance of several members of the community, the Splain Brothers, who provided some construction landscaping support, and also the Daniel T. Morrell Funeral Home and Patrick Morrell, who provided a granite plaque and marker. I don't, was somebody planning to run this?
Yeah.
Somebody? Okay. We have, for those who can see up on the screen, some of the work in progress. I don't know if Mr. Como would like to come up and describe some of that work? That would be helpful.
Just a little slideshow of a few pictures that were taken during the construction. The maintenance department was going to do this on their own, but looking at the size of the project and then knowing a friend of mine specializes in this, one phone call to Kevin, and he was more than happy to come up with him and his brother, and they spent about two weeks helping us complete this project. It's, the project came out perfect, a lot nicer than it would have been if we were doing it on our own. It was nice and flat, and the pitch is perfect. They did an excellent job, cleanup, everything, you know, everything. Pat Morrell, who donated the plaque, there was just one phone call to him. He just happened to have a piece of granite the size we needed. He engraved it. We had it in two days. Thank you very much. But the, this was a project that never got completed during the construction because the town only had so many funds for the construction because we were responsible for all the site work and grounds. So this project held off, also because of the placing of the time capsule, which is underneath this. So we're holding off for that. So hopefully, no one tries to dig it up because they will have a hard time getting that out of there. But I just, again, like to thank the Splain Brothers for their hard work. Without them, this project never would have been completed at this time. And the donation from the alumni, which started the ball rolling about a year ago. So it's taken over a year to get this going, and Helen's been very patient with me. So I thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Como. You can stay up here if you would. So at this time, I'd like to invite up to the podium Mrs. Helen Santelli on behalf of the Mary Wells Coal Trade High School Alumni Fund. Thank you so much. Thank you for everything. Sincerely appreciate it. I'd also like -- And if the Splain Brothers are here, I think we have half of the crew. We have some certificates of appreciation for them as well. Thank you so much. Much appreciated. You can hang your sign. I do not see Patrick Morrell this evening. I don't see him.
Yes, I wasn't sure if he was going to be able to.
Okay. So with our deep appreciation to Mr. Morrell, I will make sure that he gets the certificate, thanking him as well. Thank you very much for that. Just while I'm here, I may as well. The next presentation is of the Southbridge Education Association. The President and Vice President, Maria Murray and Rigo Sanchez, have requested a few minutes of the time on the agenda to make a short presentation.
Good evening. My name is Maria Murray, and I'm the President of the Southbridge Education Association, the teachers' union. And I'm here to introduce my executive board and also give a few highlights from the first six months of my term as president. So here with me tonight is the Vice President, Rigo Sanchez. And I just want to say that both of us are longtime Southbridge residents. I think you were actually born here, and I've lived here for almost 30 years. So we're both from Southbridge, and our hearts are truly deeply rooted here. Also on the board with me is Margaret Langto as Treasurer, Violet Santiago is the Secretary, and Anna Sicilianos is our Grievance Chair. Making up the rest of the governing body for the SEA are building reps from each of the five buildings in town, four now, sorry. Four buildings in town, and they are a direct connection to the members that we represent, and they play a really important role because they bring the information forward to us that we need to act on. Each week, Rigo and myself together meet with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. If one of us can't be there, then our Grievance Chair has stepped up for us. So every single Thursday, we have a standing meeting so that topics and issues can be addressed before they become any bigger than necessary. So every week, we've been able to bring things forward. We keep things on the agenda until they have some kind of resolve. So every week, we bring the old stuff up. We continue to discuss it until there's some kind of resolution for either side. We feel really proud of the fact that we've created a positive working relationship with all of the building administrators at every single building. They have our phone numbers. They can reach us if they need to, and we've worked really hard to build up a rapport with them. We like to see things come to a conversation and be discussed and taken care of, and I'm really proud to say that we've had zero grievances so far this year. I know the last time you guys met, you were asking about grievances. There haven't been any. We've managed to resolve everything with conversation, and I think that's really important. It goes to show the relationships that we're building between the administration side and our side, and also it saves money for the district, which can be used for the kids, and that's really important. It's important to both of us and our members, too. Some other positive things, we've had joint training with the school committee for interest-based bargaining, and we'll be setting dates, like you said, later in the month, and hopefully coming to a pretty quick resolution for that. All of our members now receive PD certificates for their professional development at the end of every PD, which is something that all the surrounding districts, really good districts, do that. You get them at the end of each PD, and the members are really happy with that. And that was, that was like a quick win for us, so we liked that one. A lot of our members are now participating in statewide things for the union that we belong to at the state level, which is the Massachusetts Teachers Association. And we sent members to a new member conference and also the ethnic minority conference. Several of us went to that, and that was in December. The superintendent cooperated with us and released our members so that they could go to that, so we sent two people to each of those events. And in conclusion, I'd like to just point out that the teachers' working conditions and the environment that we work in is the students' learning environment, so it's really important that that's a positive one for our students. And we'd like to say Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas to all our families out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Now we'll move to school committee actions. Agenda item number eight. Agenda item 8A is the establishment of the Rotary International Interact Club at Southbridge Middle High School for the 2014-2015 school year.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have some questions. One is your, the agenda item says for the 2014-2015 school year, but the proposal does not say that, so I guess I need to know some clarification on that.
Okay. I don't know, Ms. Earls, would you care to address that?
I'm sorry, Ms. Abramson, you were looking for a different date on the proposal?
The, our agenda says that it's for the 2014-2015 school year, but your proposal does not state that.
Okay. I worked in collaboration with Ms. Stanton on the proposal, so if there was something lost in translation, we apologize. It is for the current school year.
Thank you. Will this club include students?
It is a student club.
In grade six through 12?
Yes. It is a student club for the entire building. We are one building. Right.
So it's scheduled to begin then as soon as?
As soon as we can appoint an advisor.
Now, I've looked at the current stipends for advisories, and you state in your proposal that $750 aligns with current stipends, and who calculated this, and how was the figure $750 arrived at?
We looked at stipends for similar types of clubs. We have a wide variety of clubs that range from the Magic Club, for example, that is a club that's advised to students who play this card game. That has a certain stipend. We have stipends for the Community Outreach Program that are similar. So we looked at similar clubs, looked at the activities that these clubs participate in, and we came up with that stipend, ran it by their superintendent's office for approval, and that's how we came up with it.
All right. And you stated that Southbridge Rotary proposes to gift the year-one advisor stipend of $750, so that's a, that's not a calendar year, that's a school year.
That's right, for the current school year.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes.
Of course, this is a generous offer from the Rotary Club, but I believe we need more information before we act on this. It may have budgetary ramifications for the district in the second year if the club continues. And if this proposal is accepted as written, it certainly impacts the contract between the Southbridge School Committee and the Southbridge Education Association. So until we're provided with additional information and until we have considered the possible ramifications, I move that action on this proposal be postponed indefinitely.
You have a motion to postpone? Is that a motion to postpone?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second on the motion to postpone?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney, so the motion, the question on the floor is postponement of this agenda item indefinitely. I'm sorry. Is there discussion, any further discussion on the agenda item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My inclination to postpone is due to the $750 from the Rotary Club, which is a wonderful gift to us. I don't think that we have voted to accept such a donation, so to move forward based on a donation that we have yet to accept, I think, is a little premature. We're going to plan for something that we have, we don't have a vote to accept the donation from the Rotary Club on the agenda, so moving forward to establish a position that's based off of a donation that we have yet to receive and accept, I think, is premature.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this agenda item? Mrs. Condon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I was very pleased that the Rotary International, Rotary Club was willing to provide this stipend to support the children of our school district. And I think it's a great, I had looked at the club in, online, and I was just going to ask for a little bit more information on the Interact Club, but I also just wanted to say that I think this, regardless of the process, I think this would be a great thing for the students in grade six through 12. The sooner the better to get this established. You know, I understand about the budget ramifications in the future. My understanding is, is that we approve stipends for all clubs at the beginning of the year, so this might be something for the next budget year to discuss. But my question, while we're on the topic, would be if you could give us a little bit of explanation about the Interact Club. Thank you.
Madam Chair, please. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. My name is Terri Colignesi. I live at 122 Denison Hill Road. I've been a lifelong resident of the town of Southbridge. I'm President of the Southbridge Rotary Club. For the last, I would say, 15 years or so, we have been sending students from Southbridge High School and Bay Path, most recently, to something called Ryla, which is a leadership weekend. It's held at, it has been held either at Nichols College or at Worcester State. It stands for Rotary Youth Leaders in Action. The kids have loved it. Those who have gone and come back, and we have them come to Rotary meeting before, when they're picked and chosen, to talk about what their wishes are for the program, and then we have them come back. Cameron was there this fall, to talk about what they gained from their experience. And one of the consistent requests over the years has been, why don't we have an Interact Club at the high school? The Southbridge Rotary has been extremely committed to the youth of Southbridge. We fund -- We fund scholarships for the kids. We have supported athletics. We have supported music programs. The Interact Club is basically a youth version of Rotary, and it's focused on providing leadership opportunities and service opportunities, primarily service opportunities in the community and internationally. It's one of those things that if you were to have it on your resume when you're going to college, looks wonderful. We have, I already have three members, potentially four if by my time frees up, to actually volunteer with the kids and work with it. We have been trying for the last four years through various administrations to try to get this in effect at Southbridge High School. Unfortunately, by this time every year, there seems to be a change in leadership. This year, we've gotten this far thanks to Melissa's efforts, thanks to listening to the kids, who, by the way, when Ryla came, Ryla kids came, said they love what's going on at the high school, so kudos to all. But the thing was, okay, we need a stipend. We don't have it in the budget this year. And Rotary said, we'll put our money where our mouth is. We really want to provide this service to the youth, and there's no reason, we can afford to do this for this year. We can, we potentially could afford to do it in the future, but the reality is, this town needs to take ownership of some of these programs as well. But the kids would be involved in helping to plan. The initial startup is fun because they got the right bylaws, they get to do all that cool stuff that any organization needs to learn how to do. It's a great learning experience. It's one of those life skills you can't put a price on, as you well know, going through bylaws and whatever. But it's an opportunity for our youth to be mentored by adults, to be mentored through community and international activities. For the life of me, I cannot understand why you would turn down a gift of time and money for the kids of our school system. They take top priority.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Abrahamson?
I certainly do not have to be sold on what a wonderful program it is. My concern has been the procedure to get to this point. I'm certainly in favor of this. I looked online, I watched the videos, I've read all about it. I understand that it's a very positive thing. I just wonder why it keeps, if it's been presented so many times, how come we don't ever get it right? Madam Chair, I will support this, but, and I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Wait, Mrs. Quinney withdraw in a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Levo?
I just have two questions and a comment. Well, one question, what kind of community service projects, just an idea, and what kind of fundraisers would these students be doing? And how, what, how involved would they be with the Rotary Club and their mentors?
The projects that they work on are their decisions to make. We will be there to help guide them, but part of the learning experience for the students is to come to that decision, to look at the needs of the community and see which ones would best fulfill their needs as a community member and make them feel good about doing stuff for the community. We, as a Rotary Club, will be totally supportive of them, but we're not going to tell them what to do. This is a leadership opportunity, and part of what they need to learn how to do is to gather information and make decisions.
Okay. And the fundraisers, what would those funds, what would they need to raise funds for?
Same thing.
Okay.
What they probably would do is raise money to donate to charity or to help start some other program or to help fund an international initiative. There were all kinds of projects. We, last year, Rotary Club funded New Roof for an Orphanage in Haiti in conjunction with St. John Paul's II Parish. They may want to follow in those footsteps. They may come up with something totally different. The thing is, when they went to that Ryla convention, a lot of kids are already in groups at their schools. They can collaborate together as different clubs, and that's also a good opportunity for them.
No, I will say that I fully support this for the reason that it wasn't necessarily the Interact Club, but the mentorship that I received from the Rotary Club when I was in high school and when I was making a difficult transition in my life for a more positive change. Now, it allotted me the opportunity to work with the peers in my community, in my school, and to speak of my experiences and how, and how they were able to help me change, how they were able to show me a different way. And thanks to them and a lot of other people who have helped mentor me along the way, I've gotten to the point in my career and in my life that I am now. So, thank you. I've wondered when this program or programs like this would come, and this is the first that I've heard, so.
We've been trying, but it's like we've never gotten beyond the principal level because, like I said, the last few years at this time, you know, we've had changes, so.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mrs. Collegnese. Thank you, Mrs. Collegnese. This is a very positive, exciting thing. You know, we always talk about community engagement and that there's so much that we want from our community and that we want it to be a mutual gain for both sides, and this is a perfect example of giving of your own time to, and the other three or four volunteers that you've mentioned. So thank you very much for that. A couple of questions that I had. It was listed in the proposal that the district will, perhaps this is for Ms. Earls, the district will post for an advisor. Ms. Earls, will that be like an internal posting, and how long do you anticipate before that would get filled?
As soon as we have approval, we can post internally. Most internal postings last seven days, and we'll see if we have applicants, but yes, we expect to fill it internally with someone who's currently on staff.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I had, Mrs. Collegnese, are there other schools in our tri-community area that currently have this particular club? Do you know of?
There are some in the Worcester area. The exact name of the schools elude me at this point, but I know the Sturbridge Club is interested in starting one in Tantascwa, and they're kind of watching to see what happens with ours.
Okay. Well, first, let's beat them to the punch.
And if we do good, we might go to Bay Path as well, and we'll just get them all involved, which would be great because it's, again, it's a great opportunity for the kids.
Absolutely. My final question is, I know that the Ryla that you mentioned, those students, those are, if I'm not mistaken, those students are usually chosen or recommended by their faculty. Just for clarification, this would be a club, so is there no limitation for the number of students that may apply, or there's no recommendation that's required? Is it anybody that's just interested to partake in this leadership type of event that they can do so?
The only requirement for participation will be the requirements laid out in the handbook for participation in any club, so academic eligibility.
Okay, excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Quinney?
One question. Thank you. And again, I echo everyone's sentiments regarding the value of this and the value add to our community. My question is, within the proposal, it said the district will post for an advisor and to be paid during year one by the Southbridge Rotary. Is that, how will that be done? Are we, are you proposing donating $750 to the school district to then be paid out? Stipends create a payroll, how that process?
If you accept the donation, then the donation will come in, and then through the finance office, turn around that way, as Aaron's not in his head there.
Yeah, we can do that.
So that's not. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to thank you for this proposal. This is actually the first time I've ever heard of this, and I would like you to know that the school committee was unaware that this had ever been in the pipeline, as far as I know, so we're very sorry that you've had trouble bringing this forward in the past and hope that we can certainly rectify that. So I just wanted to make that point clear, and we welcome, we certainly welcome this donation and participation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll redeem myself, if I may, and move to accept.
So we're going to make a motion to accept the establishment of the Rotary International Interact Club at Southbridge Middle High School for the 2014-2015 school year. Is that your motion? Thank you. A second? Mr. Levo seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Ms. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you. And the kids of Southbridge, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on, excuse me.
Madam Chair, I move that the school committee vote to accept a donation of $750 from the Rotary International Club for the purpose of stipending the Interact Club advisor for the 2014-2015 school year.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, and a second, to accept the donation of $750 for the purposes of the Rotary International Interact Club. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Ms. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Mrs. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Okay. Now we have Agenda Item 8B, which goes hand in hand, which is the establishment of the Rotary International Interact Club advisor at Southbridge Middle High School for the 2014-2015 school year. So this is the vote to establish that position for this school year.
So moved.
Mrs. Quinney makes the motion. Mr. Abrahamson seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Ms. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. Now we move on to Agenda Item 8C, which is the establishment of PBIS building coach stipends for the 2014-2015 school year at Eastford Road School, Charlton Street School, West Street School, and Southbridge Middle High School. Anybody like to start the discussion?
Sure.
Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I don't believe that this is the purview of the school committee. I believe that this is an administrative item. I think receiving information that a grant has been proposed and achieved, attained, gotten by the district is appropriate, and how, what that grant was for and whatever monies are coming in and how that will be spent is appropriate. However, I do not think it is our role to vote to establish such a position or such a stipend for a grant that came in for that purpose, that was written for that purpose. I believe it's an administrative item and not a school committee purview item.
Thank you. Ms. Stanton, would you like to respond to that? Do you have anything to say to that?
Only, thank you. Only that in managing grants, I would agree, it is the purview of the grant in its creation to create the stipends, and then in receiving the grant, then manage that grant appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Osborne, do you have any input in that?
No, there were, there were some questions that were forwarded to us that we can answer if that's the will of the committee or?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. This is, this is to answer some questions that came in to Ms. Culligan's office, and she was unable to be here, so she asked if I could present some items. This is, in fact, a grant we've received in the past in lesser amounts. Grants can fluctuate based on, you know, local changes, changes in population, so our Title I grant can go up or down slightly, as can any of our other grants. This grant was probably adjusted based on sped populations, things like that. This grant, in the past, has been used to support the same activities, PBIS, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports? I got it? Wow. I'll be proud of myself for that. In the past, we've used outside consultants to do a lot of the training and PBIS supports. The outcomes have been mixed. I think we've, we've had some feedback from our school administrators. I have some packets from them in regards to the effectiveness of PBIS that I can share with the school committee if they so wish after this. This year, the intent is to develop in-house coaches and leaders in PBIS through training and development, so a lot of this money will go towards professional development of those staff, as well as some stipends to support those staff to do in-house support and training. The hours are expected to entail working roughly 10 hours per month at an estimated amount of $25 per hour for approximately eight months. There will be some summer planning included so that they can plan a full year of activities for the following year, as well as a proper rollout of the program. I believe that covers most of what she gave me from sort of a high level. If there's more, I'm happy to try to answer that.
Any other questions? Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Osborne, for that clarification. The only thing I wanted to make a comment about in regards to this item on the agenda is, as a school committee member, I think it's, I like to hear about how the grant money's being used, because it is a lot of money that's coming in. I was, I happened to be on the DESE website, and I had noticed that last year, in regards to that grant, we had received for that grant, 274, $8,733, and this year, we had received $12,525. So it is a significant amount of money that of a change, and it's nice to see where all that money's going. Also, looking on that, on the DESE website, the district total of those grants was 1.9 million from Title I, Title III, Title II, that sped improvement grant, IDEA 2015, and the Early Childhood Special Education Program Improvement, which is a significant amount of money, and it's nice as a school committee member to know how that money is being spent for the students of our district. So I just wanted to make that comment and just say thank you for all of that clarification in regards to that, Fund Code 274. Thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a questionnaire, and it's not specifically money, so I'm not sure if you can answer it. I can certainly forward my question to Ms. Culligan. I know that, again, similar to the postings that I had asked Ms. Earls about, this position, these positions or these will also be posted internally as per the proposal, and my question was, what type of like classification of employees will be eligible? And by that, I mean, is it existing teachers, IRS people, educational assistants? Where, what's the pool going to be for these?
Predominantly existing teachers, and that could include IRSs, I would imagine. Anyone who's on the standard teaching contract would be eligible. They're going to need to be able to devote a pretty solid block of time, and that would come into consideration if there's someone who's already earning a stipend for something else. We might need to consider whether that, that time is best spent in that activity, and that's something we do with sort of all of these stipends. We try to, you know, we don't need one person taking 12 stipends and adding 70 hours a week to their existing week.
And then my, yeah, that's a good answer. Thank you. And then my second question was, looking at the job description, the second bullet under principal accountabilities was to ensure expectations are taught, reinforced, and monitored at the school, and that just made me think, just, you know, dealing with curriculum. Is there a set curriculum for PBIS that we follow or that we should be following, and that the creation of these coaches will allow us to do a better job at that?
I'm, I'm not certain there is a curriculum, per se. There are standards and processes and structures in place. If you give me a moment. No, I'm sorry. I thought there was, was something more in there on that, but it does set up a series of social, emotional, behavioral assessed supports for students within the district, and those are very well highlighted in the PBIS system. I'm aware of that. I don't specifically know. That's not my area, so I don't specifically know.
Okay, that's fine.
Mrs. Stanton, wanted to just say a few words on that.
One of the things with PBIS, one of the foundational pieces is to allow staff the opportunity to build the expectations for students and for staff in the building. So in a PBIS building, you would see expectations posted at various locations throughout the building. So in the cafeteria, these are the expectations for behavior in the cafeteria, in the hallways, these are the expectations. That takes time, energy, and leadership to develop from the ground, from the staff. So that's part of PBIS. The other thing is then to build your tiers of support. So in tier one, in all classrooms, in all settings, teachers and staff of the entire school reinforce those with students. They teach them to students and then reinforce them. For students who aren't able to meet those expectations, then we have tier For students who aren't able to meet those expectations, then we have tier two and tier three.
Okay.
That is all work that needs to be developed by the coach, or by the leader of that group, to make sure that all of the staff understand those and are sharing them in, in ways that are consistent.
Okay.
So if there's no gum chewing in one classroom, there's no gum chewing in another classroom, things like that.
Okay.
And then students receive a consistent approach to expectations in the school.
Consistency is key.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm all set. Thank you.
I would just like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues up on the dais, and say that I do not believe this is the purview of the school committee. I do not believe we have to take action on this item tonight. So unless there's a motion to take action, then we take no action. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 8D, we have the request or approval of a special educational assistant position for the 2014-2015 school year.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Abrahamson?
I understand the previous argument that it doesn't belong, but I do have some questions. Has it been determined whether it's less expensive to hire an educational assistant than it would be to send a student out for services? Do we know what the cost differential is?
It's huge. It's not what the IEP requires.
Ms. Stanton?
That's not what the IEP requires, so we're completing the, the expectation, or the requirement of the IEP.
Which is governed by what?
It's mandated, unfunded mandate. Yeah.
If the school committee votes for this additional position, which you actually can do it anyway, I understand that, do we have enough money in the budget to pay for it? In other words, it's one thing to vote for an additional position, but is there enough money? Do we know where the money comes to pay for it?
Mr. Osborne?
Very specifically, we actually just had a staff turnover that resulted in about $10,000 in savings, and this position for the remainder of the year, assuming, I assume for about 100 days remaining in the year, I think we're looking at about $10,800. So I, I think those two items very specifically can be a wash in the budget. I think we do have some ability to support this position.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Quinney?
Madam Chair, thank you. Through you to Mr. Osborne, is Circuit Breaker specifically built into, as an addendum to our budget in order to absorb the cost when students come in on IEPs that weren't budgeted and planned for? Is that the, a function of Circuit Breaker?
It's, it's predominantly to offset out-of-district costs. Our out-of-district costs, as are many districts' out-of-district costs, well beyond what we could budget for. Circuit Breaker is intended to be a backstop. If you look at the first page of your budget reports that I shared with you, the very first item is Circuit Breaker that offsets the vast majority of our out-of-district costs. And so it doesn't specifically pay for those, those IEP costs, but it brings the out-of-district costs down in such a way that we could reallocate funds accordingly.
Thank you. And I would also say about this agenda item that it's not the role of the school committee to approve educational assistant positions. If this is a mandate, students move into the district, they come with IEPs, we must, by law, meet their IEP. If that requires they have a one-to-one, an educational assistant, and everything else, by law, we need to provide that. Doesn't mean the state is giving us money. I think Circuit Breaker does provide a little bit of a cushion to absorb some of those costs, but I believe that, as the special ed director, Ms. Culligan is completely in her purview to hire someone in order to meet the needs of a student based on their IEP. And I don't think we should be voting to approve or not approve such a position.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question, perhaps to Ms. Stanton. Do you know if the student is already here without the one-on-one, or are we waiting to get the one-on-one, and then we'll have the student?
To my knowledge, the student is not here yet.
Not here yet.
This is in preparation of the registration.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure, I know Mrs. Culligan isn't here, if, who could answer this? Did the student come into the district with the IEP?
Correct.
Okay. And does the, because the other district would, it was from another district?
Correct.
Does the other district have to budget anything for that IEP?
Depending on, actually, Ms. Culligan would be able to answer that more correctly than I would. There is a cutoff date where the, where the prior district would be culpable for the expenditure. At this point, I don't know the date exactly, but if Ms. Culligan were here, she would be able to answer that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, we'll, if, if, if we are within our right to take money from the other district, we, I promise you, we will. That's, I don't want anybody to be confused that, that we won't ask them for the money.
I do seem to recall a conversation in years past where there was a date by which the prior, the sending school district would, the sending school district would have responsibility, because it makes sense. They budget a certain amount into a school year, whereas the receiving district didn't have that budgeted. So I, but I'm not sure of the date certain, so I would like some of that information, if possible. The debate about, and I will give you an opportunity to speak in one second, the debate about whether we need to approve this position or not, it is kind of, we need the position, of course. We can't not have the position. So then it becomes, well, do we approve it, or have the authority to approve it? And this debate has occurred ever since I've been on school committee, and the feeling in the past has been that if a position is unbudgeted but created for a specific purpose during the school year, that the school committee sanction it. You don't have to agree with me, that's just been the feeling of years past, so I just offer that up. And Ms. Scripsak, did you want to speak to this agenda item?
I just didn't know if I could answer any questions for you. I can't answer as far as what the other district is responsible for, but myself, the guidance counselor, have already met with the family. They're moving from another town here as of January 1st, and...
Yeah. I, I don't think that, I think we're okay as far as that goes. Well, I think we all recognize the position is required, and we'll be here. It's just a matter of, kind of internally, whether we vote on it or not, so...
And it is part of the student's IEP coming here. So it was an unexpected expense for us, but we are required by law to provide that child with the support services that's stated in the IEP.
Thank you. So, again, with this issue, if there is no motion, then there's no action. If there's a motion, then we act. So I defer to my colleagues. There's no action on this item tonight. And next, we have discussion regarding the appointment of the Director of Finance.
Madam Chair?
Also named the Finance Director. Mr. Abrahamson?
Madam Chair, I move that action on the appointment of a Director of Finance be postponed to the school committee meeting of February 10th, 2015, and that a special order concerning this appointment be placed on the February 10th, 2015 Agenda immediately following subcommittee reports. And may I speak to that?
Please.
Madam Chair, before I speak directly to the motion, I ask the chair for some clarification. It's my understanding that the appointment of a Director of Finance is within the scope and powers of the superintendent. In other words, the school committee itself does not make the appointment. If the assistant superintendent were to bring forth a name tonight on behalf of the superintendent, that candidate will be appointed unless the committee can show that he or she does not meet the qualifications for the position according to our current job description. Member comments along the lines of, "I have a better candidate," or "I don't like the candidate," or "I'm not happy with the way I've seen the candidate perform," are not in order, because they don't speak to a candidate's qualifications. Have I stated that correctly, Madam Chair?
Uh-huh. I believe so. The role of the school committee is one of advise and consent.
Thank you. First, I want to assure my colleagues that the motion before them is debatable. It will take a two-thirds majority, and I, would that be four out of six tonight, or what would that be?
I do believe that that is the majority of the school committee, whether or not they're present.
So it would be five?
Yes.
Five. People, if five people vote yes, it passes. Failing that, we are essentially back to square one, and the onus is on the ones voting in the negative to lead the way. Madam Chair, I realize that parliamentary procedure can be confusing for all of us, so here's the choice plainly stated. If members want to assure that no appointment of a Director of Finance is made this evening, then a yes vote on my motion by five members will accomplish that. A no vote on my motion means that members want the discussion to continue right now, and that will perhaps conclude with the appointment of a Director of Finance this evening. Madam Chair, I yield for any discussion or motions from others.
Second. So we have a motion on the floor to postpone this meet, this appointment until the February 10th, 2015 Agenda. Is there any other discussion on this motion to postpone? Mrs. Quinney?
Madam Chair, thank you. Through you to Mr. Abrahamson. Why February 10th?
I believe that we probably, it may be, there may be some events. If it was a simple motion to defer, it would go to the next meeting. I think that with the holidays, with many things that could ensue, it's best to go forward to a later date than that.
Is there any other discussion on the vote to postpone? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you. Sorry. Who were the people that sat on the search committee for the Director, Finance Director? Director of Finance?
Ms. Stanton could speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School committee member, Mr. Abrahamson, sat on the committee. I was the chair of the committee. I have to go around the table. The two-town accountant officers, Karen Harnoyes, I believe, and Mindy, escapes me.
Erch Fornier.
Thank you. From our central office staff, we had Katie Joris, and we also had Deanna Martinez, who are both integral in working through budget and procurement and all of those issues. And in addition, we also had Dr. Sally Dias, who's been working with us from the state, although she was non-voting. She did offer some insight into the process and the role of a, of a finance director. I think that's everybody, but I didn't come prepared for that.
And my next question would be, is the person potentially to be appointed, they were moved forward from that committee?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is regarding a postponement. Again, my, to the best of my knowledge, we would need five votes to postpone this vote this evening. If there's no further discussion, I'll request a roll call.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
I don't know. Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. This will be postponed until February 10th, 2015. Next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number Nine. It's unfinished business, which we moved, item from the consent agenda. That was Item Number C2, BEDH, Public Participation. Mrs. Quinney requested removal, so I'd let her speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first concern that I have is, in the first sentence, there's a typo. It should be statutes of the Commonwealth. And then next, the addition of what is in bold, if, discussing if a resident or other individual likes to comment to the school committee, they can do so by mail or email, and it goes on. I don't believe that that belongs in this policy, as it's Public Participation Act school committee meetings. I would request that that, if that was something that the policy committee wanted to write into a policy, that it would be better suited in Policy BHD, Committee Communication with the Public. Also, I think that the policy needs to have some opportunity, if someone who is addressing the committee goes over three minutes, or is not able to complete their statements, because it is too lengthy, or for whatever reason, that they would then have the opportunity to provide a written statement to the committee. And those were my comments and why I asked for that to be moved.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak? We do have a policy subcommittee meeting for January 7th, so I am happy to take these back to the committee for further discussion. Is that a suitable remedy?
If it works for me.
Madam Chair, I would also request that the committee reconsider changing the agenda format. I know that they had opted not to pursue that. However, I have concerns that the Attorney General recommended that we do that, and not doing that could lead to problems down the road. So I would ask that that is reconsidered also at Jan, on January 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business this evening? Seeing none, under new business, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 13th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Next, we have member forum, Agenda Item Number 11. Is there any member who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Abrahamson?
Madam Chair, thank you. As you know, the Southbridge Community Network narrowcast live these meetings of the Southbridge School Committee, and then re-airs the program on Channel 191 for those who may have missed it, or want to watch it again. The same is done for the Southbridge Town Council on Channel 192. The station manager for the Southbridge Community Network is employed both by the town and the school system. Our last school committee meeting, which was on December 9th, 2014, was re-aired on Channel 191 at an unprecedented rate, 24 hours a day, for five days straight. There was no other programming on Channel 191 for that entire period of time. It became an all-school committee, all-the-time channel for five days around the clock. Now, Madam Chair, I know we appreciate the emphasis on the important work of this school committee, but let's be fair, the town council does some important work, too. And the acting town manager is at least as important as our superintendent. I think we ought to insist that they get equal treatment. So, Madam Chair, I'm requesting you and the acting town manager meet jointly with the station manager of the Southbridge Community Network to find out why the decision was made to give us so much airtime, and comparatively so little, to the town council. And, Madam Chair, if you will, please report your findings to us at the next live narrowcast of this school committee on January 13th, 2015. We certainly don't want to risk a re-airing of this meeting in the same fashion as the last one. An around-the-clock marathon airing of a school committee meeting, the Christmas edition, just might be too much for the town council and the acting town manager to bear. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Abrahamson?
Madam Chair.
Not at this time, Mr. Montigny. I, I'm happy to speak to you afterward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Olivo?
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While he's still here, I wanted to thank Mr. Satilli. Certificates certainly were not necessary. We're glad that, to hear that each child got four toys, that's great. And kudos to you, not to us, but kudos to you and your... And kudos to you, not to us, but kudos to you and your organization. You're out there year after year doing what you do in our community, and so thank you very much for that. Thank you. Like Mr. Olivo, wishing our school system happy holidays, and we're especially wishing our community peace. It's been a rough few weeks and days for our community, so as a whole, I wish our community peace. And today, I had the joy of listening to a bunch of firsts through fifth graders sing at West Street School. I know that Mr. Latoy had his concert simultaneously, and I'm sure they did at Eastford Road too. So not enough thanks goes out, I think, to our music teachers. It's not an easy job getting all those kids to sing and do what they do, and it was a great show, so I wanted to thank them. And of course, the building administrators and the teachers for keeping everything in order and in line for that all our concerts were successful this holiday season. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Condon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, again, just wanted to thank the Mary E. Wells and Coal Trade High School Alumni Fund for the generous donation and funding for those pavers outside of our middle school, high school. I especially wanted to thank their representatives, Ms. Santilli and Mr. Genero. And I also wanted to thank Splain Brothers Landscaping, Kevin Splain and Sonny Splain. Not only did they help with that project, but they had also helped with the West Street School Playground. They generously gave their time to that without being, you know, without even wanting to be recognized. They like to do things behind the scenes, and I truly appreciate the work that they have done to benefit the community and the children of our school district. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Patrick Morrell for the donation of the granite plaque. It's members of our community like this that help to make things better. So on that note, I just also wanted to wish all staff, students, and families a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Quinney's going to try.
Thank you. Hopefully, I don't end up in a coughing fit. My apologies if I do. Obviously, at the last meeting, I had no voice with which to speak, and I wanted to share with people the, I had the opportunity to attend the first grade homework night at West Street School, and I wanted to thank Mrs. Canoyer, Ms. Fontaine, Mrs. Grant, Mrs. Krasinski, Ms. Lovely, Mrs. Gesitis, Ms. Pishi, and Mrs. Strickards. I know that last year, we had done the family and community engagement. Subcommittee had put out a survey about what parents wanted, and one of the things was they wanted help with homework. And I believe as a direct response to that, they had a homework night, and in their presentation, they had students in one room playing games that then parents were able to take home and incorporate in homework time with students. They gave us cards, dice, counting chips, all sorts of really nice strategies, and also helped explain how homework should be done, how you can support your kids in doing homework. It was a really, really great program, so I would encourage anyone, if they do it for any other grade, it is absolutely worthwhile and was very helpful and beneficial to me, and I know we have had lots of fun with our packet. So if the opportunity arises, I would recommend you all take it. There are also, my family was able to attend Bedtime Stories at Eastford Road School, which was a roaring success. I think there's a lot of things going on in buildings that we don't give enough credit to all the hard work that people have to put in to pull off these nights that are great for families and the community as a whole. So thank you to everyone that put that together. Also, I was able to attend Eastford Road's music presentation, and I will forever have five little evergreen trees stuck in my head. It was very fun, and thank you to everybody that put that together. Today, I was able to go to West Street School and see the first through fifth graders perform, and although it looks like there is no school tomorrow, is no school tomorrow despite no snow, it was a wonderful performance by all, and thank you to Mr. Heath, who does a really nice job, and it was nice to see that the band has expanded as well. I think that that was a lot important to the donation of instruments that happened through the Arts Initiative. So thank you to everybody that put that together. And aside from that, I just wanted to talk about some challenges I think we face as a community, and I think one of the biggest challenges we face is this us versus them mentality, the town side versus the school side, you know, teachers versus this one, that one. I think I would hope that people would consider for a New Year's resolution that we become the we. I think individually, we all have roles in being part of we, but I think being united as a community around the good work that's happening, the improvements that we're seeing. When I ran for the school committee, it was with the intention of turning the district around. That was what people wanted. They wanted, I heard, we can't be in Level Four forever. We hear that over and over and over again. And that, this we isn't going to get that done. We have teachers that are working really, really hard in buildings, and administrators that are working hard in buildings, parents who are working hard, and a lot of really good things going on. Unfortunately, there are people in this community, for whatever reason, despite the majority of the people wanting the best for our community, have other motivators. I won't claim to know what they are, but they are not what's in the best interest of students or the school district. And I think we need to recognize as a community, Southbridge, that our town isn't going to be a vibrant town unless we have successful schools. And we're not going to get successful schools in a divided community where we have town, the town side and the school side. We need to be us, we need to be we, we need to be united behind positive momentum, things going forward. And I think it's easier to play us versus them and not take responsibility and step up in the role that we all play as members of this community in having a successful school district and having a vibrant community. And it is especially hurtful to me and, I guess hurtful will be the kindest word I can use at this time, to hear adults talking about sides and people having chosen wrong sides, or the wrong side, or you're on the wrong side. And the only side anyone in this community, in schools, should be on is a side of students, student achievement and progress. And the only side anybody in the community should be on is the side that improves our community by investing in schools and being a united community. A we, we need to be we, and we need to do that better, and I think we are capable of that. And if we're ever going to move out of Level Four, underperforming whatever it is, it's not going to be seven people sitting here, it's not going to be nine people sitting on the town council, it's not going to be four principals, it's not going to be any of that. It is going to be an entire community that stands behind 2,200 students and say, "You matter. Your future is important to us, and we support you in achieving the dreams that you have and being as successful as you can be. We believe in you. We believe it's possible. We believe in the teachers, we believe in the administration, and the town believes in a school district that is capable of that, and we all do that as a community." So I would ask that as you're filling out your New Year's resolutions, that you strongly consider thinking about 2,200 students who sit in classrooms, who are depending on this entire community to help them reach their dreams and their goals, that they would be our priority, and you would be on their side, and there would be, there would be no town, school, anything, that we, as a community, would be Southbridge and be the we that all our students and our community needs us to be. So please, Merry Christmas, enjoy the holidays, and I hope you come up with some united New Year's resolutions. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number 12. This is executive session. There will be an executive session tonight pursuant to Massau Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to discuss the superintendent's contract. I have a motion?
So.
Mr. Abrahamson made a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Congdon seconds the motion. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The school committee will reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment only. Thank you all, and best wishes for the New Year.